Okay, it looks like we're pushing through.
It just showed up and said it's being livestreamed, so I think you're good. Let me check YouTube. So it'll pop up a YouTube video, make our YouTube channel exit off that, or you'll get feedback.
Being livestreamed, so I think you're good. Let me check YouTube. Nick, so it'll pop up a YouTube video, make our YouTube channel exit off that, or you'll get feedback. Oh, I got you, I got you. Okay, yeah, I closed that out.
Okay, let me try and see. Alright, you are live.
Cool, looks like the audio is working, so.
Alright, so now just mute me and mute everyone until the meeting starts, and then just make sure to unmute everyone, and you should be good.
Sounds good. Thanks, man.
Yeah, thanks, Josh. We'll see ya.
Welcome everyone to our October 21st, 2025 City Council Meeting. We just finished a workshop where we went over our emergency management plan, so a lot of information digested by us up here, so this will be a nice little transition into City Council Meeting now. So we will start this City Council Meeting like we always do, and if you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. Rory, will you see who is here?
Yes, cast member Clever is online.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Cast member Clever is online. Cast member Billings here, Mick Lash here, Brown.
Here.
And cast member Robinson's excused.
Okay, that's four of us, so we do have a quorum. Moving on, we have a Unified Fire Authority Report. To give us the quarterly report is Chief K. And I will recognize our UFA folks, 125, what platoon, ABC? Hey, the A Team is here as well. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to provide the quarterly report. First of all, I want to introduce Chief Russell. He's Assistant Chief over Administration and Planning. We recently did an update to how we're doing our liaison duties at UFA. And so Chief Russell is the AC of this liaison group over me, so I report to him for the liaison duties. And so Chief Russell's going to accompany me to your City Council meetings about once a quarter. And so just another layer of communication that we have back to our leadership, so.
Welcome, Chief Russell.
Yeah, we can go hit the next slide, and that'll bring up kind of the quarter of the report for Midvale. Oh, perfect. Got it. Okay, so you can see 1,061 total incidents for the quarter in Midvale City. 455 of those are what we consider emergent, so those are the ones that you see us running lights and sirens to. Top fire calls for the city, four structure fires and four vegetation fires. So not an active, you know, fire season for that quarter in Midvale, which is good. You know, the top EMS calls you can see there, lots of sick people and short falls, we call them. So those are kind of the ground level falls. So that's kind of the call type. You can see Station 125, what these guys represent was was the busier of your two stations with 538 calls and 126 had 423. So I'll have you note the 90th percentile time of 6:38. So that's 90% of the time we are arriving at the incident in 6 minutes and 38 seconds. And that is one of the faster times in the UFA, so these crews do a great job of getting out the door and getting to the call. So that's the end of the quarterly report. Just a couple of updates for you from UFA. We're about ready to graduate our recruit camp, so that'll bring 20 new firefighters onto the team. Just a reminder that the UFA's EMS Division provides public CPR courses. The next one is this Saturday from 9 to 1 at Station 126. So if anybody needs a CPR course, they can get onto our website and sign up there. Last thing I kind of wanted to talk about with the change of the weather is a safety message. So be cautious with our heating devices and make sure that we're keeping, you know, flammable three feet away from our portable heaters and those things. And then make sure that our carbon monoxide detectors are working as we make the transition into winter. So that's the end of the report. Any questions, Mayor or Council?
Any questions for Chief K? This is unorthodox, but nice.
Sorry, do you offer the CPR courses to member agency staff? Like if we put on a course for Public Works, is that something you could do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Moving on, we will proceed to public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. You'll be given three minutes. You can step up to the mic at this point. We're friendly, I promise. Luke, I thought you might. State your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Luke Mainz. I'm the Secretary for the Midvale Community Council. I just wanted to give you a quick update related to the Midvale Community Council. We have our website live now. It's midvalecc.org. On there, one of the things we have going is our our beautification committee is hosting a Halloween decoration contest. You can nominate any business or home in Midvale for their Halloween decorations. And at the end of the month, we're going to have some prizes for the winners, some gift cards to local businesses. We have our regular Community Council Meeting next Wednesday, the 29th at 6:00 PM at the Ruth Fine Tyler Library. Anyone is welcome to attend and encouraged to attend. As part of that, we're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club of Midvale to collect donations for their fun drive at our meeting, and we're going to take them over to the Boys and Girls Club the next day. And so if you have anything that you were going to take to like Savers or DI, you're welcome to bring that to the meeting, and we'll take it over for you. The Boys and Girls Club is also having a Halloween party this Friday. And we are trying to get members of the Midvale Community Council to help out with that, with setup and take down. And so there's more information about that. We sent information about that out to our members, and we'll put information about it on our website. We also recently got an EIN, so we can officially register as a 501(c)(3). We have our application in for that. We haven't received a word answer yet. But once we do, we'll let the city know, because we'd love to partner with you more officially once we're formally registered. And I think that's about it. But, oh, at our next meeting, we're breaking out into our smaller committees, active transportation, events, beautification and communications. And so for about half of our meeting, we'll be doing that, and we'll plan it. Each of the committees will be planning initiatives to do over the rest of the year and into next year. So if you're interested in getting involved in the community, you'd be welcome to attend. We'd love to have everyone there.
Luke, I have a follow-up question. Awesome job, by the way, to get the website up and the 501(c)(3). Those are two big, huge steps. So for the Cans of Chaos, that is the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser. Sorry, Matt looked over at me like, what are you talking about? Cans of Chaos. So for the donations, are they looking for like Boys and Girls Club related donations? Like I shouldn't bring like a lot of adult men's clothes for that donation drive. Do you know that?
So there's two different donation drives they're looking for. One is their bigger fun drive, which anything you would take to DI, take it there. They're partnered with Savers, they're gonna get some kind of kickback. I don't know the details of that. For the haunted house specifically, they're looking for donations related to like the haunted house setup. And they have a separate list that I sent out for that. But they actually are done collecting donations for that, because they've need to buy the stuff.
So just adult, men, women's, children's.
Men's, women's, children's clothing, small household items. Just like I said, anything you take to DI that fits in a box or a bag that we can transport. You can take that directly to the Boys and Girls Club, or you can take it to our Midvale Community Council Meeting on the 29th, and we'll take it to them.
So, sounds good. Thank you, Luke. Thanks. Would anyone else like to address the council? Welcome, and just state your name for the record.
Is there any minute start right now? My name's Dave Hamilton. I'm here to discuss the beautification project up Twin Peaks Street. Now bear with me, I'd given up on public speaking when I retired from the military, so might be a little bit rusty. But my neighbor Lana Stewart went up and down that street and asked questions of all the residents. She couldn't get them all. There's 41 houses on both streets. She got 29 of them. And her question, I gotta use these now, unfortunately. Three questions she asked. Do you want speed humps on the street? Do you want speed humps where they were? And do you like the two speed humps close to the top and the bottom of the street? Okay, I'm gonna give what Lana come up with from the people, and I'll give you my bottom line up front after that. Well, it seems that, do you want speed bumps on this, on your street? 18 people said yes. That's 62, 62% of the people that replied. Do you want them where they were? 58%, 17 people said yes, 9 no. Do you like two steep up, speed? I got bumps, humps is the new word, I guess. No said 22, that's 75% for yes. Now, we appreciate what you did with the street. But the comments of some of these people were, the lady down by Astral Burgers wants wants a one close to her place. And nine of the other were, they're too high. And my thought is this, and I'll give you my bottom line up front. The money you save by not putting four in was wasted on the two because they're ineffective. I see people drive up to that car at night, and they'll get over there, and they'll mash it down and go through an uncontrolled intersection until they get close to the next one. I've been there 42 years, and I've seen a road rally up that street, shots fired. And after all that, we got the speed bumps. So they're, I think they're a good deal, but I understand that initiative that no speed bumps at all in cities anymore. Is that correct?
It's, yeah, go ahead.
For a variety of reasons, that is, the general position is that we don't put in speed bumps anymore. I think you were the last group that got.
Lucky us, so my suggestion to you is, since those two are ineffective, pull them out and don't put any in. And I appreciate your time. I had a good discussion with your city engineer, and I appreciate them coming out and taking a look and addressing this. So again, thanks for your time. I'll look for incoming removal soon.
Yeah, and we do have some information on that. We have been working since those speed humps, you're right, is the new. We have been working since those speed humps, you're right, is the new terminology were installed. The information I received most recently is that the wrong type of speed hump was installed there. And that was an issue with the actual contractor who performed the work. And we are talking with that contractor to make sure that they take out the incorrect ones and put back ones that we actually asked them to put in. So I know Brandon is here, our city engineer, and he had some additional information. He was gonna talk to anyone who.
Oh, you just want to put two in?
We haven't determined that officially yet, but I think Brandon, who's if you are, did you talk to him today?
Yeah, him and one of the contractors. Good discussion. So like I say, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and we'll we'll try to reach. I think we have your contact information. If not, can you sign the right out there? You did, okay. So I'll reach out to you and let you know when we determine what is actually gonna happen.
All right, thanks for your.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council? State your name for the record.
Sue Armitage. I'd like to thank Midvale City for putting additional garbage cans on Main Street. And my next crusade is more benches and enforced speed limits. So just heads up. Also, I'm just gonna try. I used to have a community emergency response team organization in Sugar House where I used to live. I understand that Midvale doesn't have one. And I'm gonna be like reaching out to see if we can get a cert training scheduled for Midvale involving the community council and any residents who are interested in that. So if you hear about that, that's where it's coming from. Thanks.
And just to clarify, Sue, you're you're referring to like a resident group? Because Mid Midvale City, certainly we have emergency plans. So I just wanted to. Yes. I was like, weren't you there? You didn't see the entire presentation? Yes, yes, but I I wanted to make the distinction for those, you know, because you said Midvale doesn't have one. And you mean a resident group? Yes, exactly. Thank you, Sue. Would anyone else like to address the council? I know two who I thought might and just state your name for the record.
My name is Kirtana Perla.
And I'm Vitalia Sun.
Before we start, we were hoping that we could combine our time just in case we run over three minutes. Is that okay?
It shouldn't be, it like won't be, it should be under.
Yeah, I think. Seeing yes, from council, yes.
Okay, so we're hoping that you have all had a great evening so far. And for those that are running for reelection, that your campaign is going well. My name is Kirtana and Vitalia and I wanted to follow up on the issue of glass recycling in our city. As you may recall, Vitalia and I did a presentation on this topic during the council meeting a month ago. We are here today to share some updates with the council.
So shortly after the September meeting, we got to meet with John Lehrer. He's the C E O of Momentum and Momentum is the sole glass recycler in Utah. And John, he was very welcoming and then he kind of provided with us with some insights. And then he confirmed that the municipalities where more glass collection points were introduced at public locations specifically in stores and at parks have had have seen a significant increase in the amount of glass recycled. And then we kind of did some calculation, which we're not sure if it's accurate, but it would cost like a few pennies per household per year for the city to add one pub, one additional public glass collection bin. And then, given the both the economical and environmental benefits, in addition to the substantial savings from reduced landfill use, this is going to be a project with phenomenal return on investment for the community.
In order to gauge the public opinion on the idea, we started engaging with Midvale residents both in person and online a few weeks ago. The result has been overwhelmingly positive. Over ninety five percent of people we contacted were in favor of making glass recycling more accessible in Midvale through additional collection sites. During this process, close to two hundred residents have already signed a petition asking the city to take steps to study the prospect of adding more glass recycling bins.
And for the signatures, if you guys would like them, we have a copy of some of them so we can provide that to you guys. And lastly, we would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you who have taken the time to respond to our emails and we're really appreciative of like your kindness and dedication to serve the community. And we hope that the council is ready to begin the investigative process. And but however, if there are still any of you who are not like supportive or don't think this is a beneficial project for the community worthy of consideration, I believe that the community would love to hear a reason and we would be happy to address any questions or concern concerns you may have. And we hope that by the time we step off to the podium today, that the council reach a consensus on what the next step should be. Thank you.
Thank you both. Two of the the most active teenagers in in Midvale, so we appreciate all of your efforts. So as you know, I'm a huge proponent of glass recycling as well. We have curbside glass recycling offered to every resident here in Midvale for eight dollars a month. We do realize that that's not a program that everyone can opt into. Whether, you know, if someone rents their home or or rents at an apartment, they might not have the ability to do that. So I have spoken to a few of the council members and I'm looking at Councilmember Billings and Councilmember Robinson, who is not here. But we definitely need something on the east side of Midvale because we don't currently have a glass recycling bin there. We do have one here close to City Hall. So I think that that as far as the conversations I've had with council members Robinson and Billings, they were both very supportive of of looking for a space to put that Walmart parking lot seems pretty good to me, but that would require some talking to Walmart. And and honestly, that would be like, you know, us through Momentum Recycling, talking to Walmart to see if they would allow that to happen. But also just looking over here, council members Brown and Michelash too. I haven't necessarily asked them their thoughts, but we don't normally put people on this pond and say, hey, do you want this or not? But we will, I will reach out to them as well and we'll come up with some plan just to let you know how we plan to move forward with that. But at this point, we're just, you know, we're very, very appreciative of all the efforts you've put forward for this. So there's a reason why youth council folks, we'll talk about that later, but I'll see both of you next Thursday.
I was just wondering like, when do you, if like they are in support, how long do you think it would take for like a motion to happen?
Well, welcome to the slow grind of city government. But we will, it's difficult to say. I will do my very best to make that timeline clear at the next time that we speak to.
And I was trying to say like, it's not necessarily already starting to put these collection points, but in general, just kind of having kind of starting to think about like where potential locations could be and start to plan it out that could happen like far before actual glass recycling bins are added in the city.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? There's an old rule, never follow teenagers who are very, very active and engaged. That's very difficult. So seeing no other public comments, we'll move on to council reports. And we'll start as we always do in District One with Councilmember Bonnie Billings.
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a couple of quick things. First, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the community council, the members that have been really active and really making this a real thing here in Midvale that is is going to be fantastic. So I wanted to thank those of you that are here, those of you that go to those the meetings that are participating and all of that. I think that it's excellent and I love that we've got a chance to get to know you better in that way. So I just everybody, if you have the opportunity to attend some of these events, if you have the opportunity to volunteer, if there's ever needs for that, please do, because we should be supporting our community council as they move forward in this great way. And then I also just wanted to remind everybody that your ballots have arrived in your mailbox. It's in a bright yellow envelope, so you can't miss it. Union's poll elections are incredibly important to your everyday life. And so I just want to make sure that everybody is planning to make their voices heard and return their ballots by eight P M. On November fourth. There's not a postmark this year, so you have to get it in by eight o'clock at the latest. So just keep that in mind and get them in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Billings. District Two, Councilmember Paul Glover, joining us online from Denver, Colorado.
Well, I'm glad to be here and be able to be in our meeting this evening. I would echo that about the election that we would like all of our constituents to please vote so that they can have their voices heard. That's all I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, safe travels.
Thank you.
Moving on, Heidi Robinson is not here tonight. She is doing something fun as well. District Four, Councilmember Brian Brown.
Thanks. I don't have anything tonight.
Sure.
Yes.
Interesting. Okay, District Five, Councilmember Denise Michelash.
I just want to remind everyone that the trick or treat is happening this Saturday on Main Street. I'll be there at noon. I think they're doing contests for costumes, twelve thirty, a couple other times. So can't wait to see everyone there. Also wanted to say, yes, I'm all for the glass recycle. Don't have to contact me about that. I use it all the time. And then third thing is, I also wanted to say thank you to the community council. As I'm around knocking on doors, telling everyone to vote, I also say, join the community council. That's a great way to get involved. So appreciate all the work that you are doing. And that is it.
Okay, thank you so much. Onto my report, I'll be very brief, just echoing what those have said. Election is happening. As of today, three hundred and seventy five people from Midvale City have voted. We expect about four thousand people to vote. So it's not bad considering it's maybe the fourth day of of them processing ballots. So we have a ways to go, but we're we're getting there. I wanted to just let you know also earlier today, we met with Rabbi Zipple, a rabbi in the Salt Lake City area who is interested in doing Midvale City hosting a menorah this year. And all five council members have said that that's something that we could do. So we're looking forward to that partnership this year. One other quick thing, yes, I also support glass recycling. So we're definitely, well, are they still here? Nope, they're not here. But two of the hardest working teenagers, I wish I had half their energy now and when I was a teenager. But we'll see what we can do about getting that fleshed out. Other than that, I don't have anything else for the group today. So we'll move along to city manager report, Matt Doll.
I think one of the things that's very true about this group up here is that we hear from you on a very regular basis about a number of different projects and things that are going on in your in your neighborhood or concerns that your neighbors have, your residents, your constituents have. And I think that it really speaks to as we talk about the different levels of government from local government, county, state, federal level, is that really we're a problem solving group. And because we're the closest to our neighbors, we want to help that it goes out. And I appreciate all of the comments and things that you guys provide us on a on a regular basis on things that we can do to improve. And we definitely have recently come upon an area that there is room for us to make significant improvement. And I really want to thank Councilmember Brown, who has always been a very strong advocate for his neighborhood and this week kindly put me on notice about an issue that we need to deal with. And and that has to do with some of the projects, the construction projects that have been commenced as we're trying to end, wrap up before the end of the construction season. And one of the things that we could do a better job of and that I can work with staff to do a better job of is sort of the when things change, how do we talk to the constituents about that? And Brian has brought up, Councilmember Brown has brought up particularly projects on Wasatch and on Monroe where there have been some things that have changed recently with regards to those. And I could have done a better job of getting the communication out to the neighborhood about those changes. I know this is gonna sound weird. I'm gonna call an audible to the audibles, so I'll just cover it, Brandon. So I guess I just want to say that we we recognize that there were some changes that occurred with regards to those projects. One of them was a change order that we saw once the engineers, this is on Wasatch Street, where we had given our regular notice out to school district, U P D, U F A and the surrounding neighbors about the initial project. And what had happened was we were repairing a belly in the sewer line. And when we got in and opened that up, we found that there the belly extended further than the engineers had originally anticipated. And we had to expand the area that we were working. And that was one where the initial notice went out a little bit earlier. But when we found that problem, we basically had to start opening up the road in front of people who did not get that same amount of notice. And and I could absolutely see where that would be a frustrating thing. And I absolutely understand and we will work on how to try to improve that process. Another issue that was brought up also is we were looking again as we're trying to beat the season, trying to put a slurry slurry seals on Monroe. And again, our system needs some improvement with regards to notices went out for that project before it commenced. But then, because we can only put it down in certain temperatures or where there's no moisture, we had to keep delaying that because of the weather recently. And what we didn't do a great job of is explaining to the neighbors that that is what had happened. And that is a shortcoming that we need to do, figure out how to do a better job of explaining that. And I take responsibility for that because I have not pushed that as a thing that we should always be doing. And and I will look to do that in the future. So I know that there's going to be some ongoing issues that is a project that is impacting a lot of folks there. However, I hope that at least some of the solace is is that some of the decisions that we are making around that, for example, doing the whole project rather than doing it in sections will result in it actually having a shorter duration than if we were to keep doing different sections of the road. And then the other thing is, is that in trying to mobilize and move on that extension of the project would save money on the on the mobilization and the demobilization. I think that we were keeping in mind the how long the project would impact people and the cost to the public when we made our decision. But what I did not do was push for there to be greater communication around that. And we will work to do better on that. So I appreciate that getting brought up and 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 we will do better. I think that's all I have for this evening. Anyone had any questions on any of those?
I I think just the one, the one thing I'd add is when we message stuff out generally, sometimes we're we're good at being reactive, right? Like the Wasatch one, once we sort of noticed that, hey, a lot of people are asking questions on Facebook, then we explained it. When there's like a main artery that could be closed for some time, we should be putting out notices like two weeks in advance on on social media and stuff, right? Like, I think responding after people complain doesn't always look great. I mean, it's good to get the info out, but it looks kind of like, whoopsies, we we missed it. And and I know that that Wasatch one, there was some change, but but we know there's going to be like kind of a main road that feeds into, you know, three schools, maybe. Maybe let's just, you know, consider a little more upfront.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt, for that explanation. I I do think a lot of folks were were wondering. I was out and about this weekend and more more so than Wasatch, I heard about Monroe Street and the project that was happening there. People are very appreciative of the infrastructure improvements that are being made, but it's that piece of just notifying that, yeah, we certainly will employ different strategies moving forward. So thank you, city manager. Moving on to public hearings, we have one public hearing on our agenda tonight. And that is to receive public comment regarding the Midvale City transportation connectivity element of the general. So thank you, city manager. Moving on to public hearings, we have one public hearing on our agenda tonight, and that is to receive public comment regarding the Midvale City Transportation Connectivity Element of the General Plan. And here to discuss that is Vindalyn. Good talk, Vindalyn.
Yeah, good talk.
You cleared out the room, by the way. They are nice.
So this item on the agenda tonight is an extension basically to the transportation master plan. And it's here because the Utah Legislature came up with this requirement in this past legislative session. Parametrics is our consultant again for this part, and Tyler Smithson is here, and he will explain a little more what the basis for this connectivity plan is, why we are doing it, and what the results are.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Smithson. I'm representing Parametrics tonight in the Transportation Connectivity Plan. To second what Vindalyn had to say, this is a requirement from Senate Bill 195 from the last legislative session. These bills have a lot packed into them, so there's many more components and funding opportunities for transportation networks. But this effort is broken down into a couple of different sections to respond to that requirement. And by the way, Midvale is on the cutting edge of reporting. The deadline is not for another two years. So hopefully that will be advantage to you in receiving funding and prioritization for your capital improvements coming down the pipeline. So Chapter One, just getting into executive summary, and Chapter Two, Steering Committee summary. In the Steering Committee, we had some great comments to support our efforts. We had Vindalyn, Jonathan, Anderson, Nate Rockwood, Adam Olson, Brandon Anderson with Midvale, and then Byron Head, Matt Ryan with the WFRC. But Chapter Three is going into the kind of the nuts and bolts of what the Senate Bill 195 was asking for, was regarding impediments. And Chapter Four is looking at priority cost estimates and funding sources. So we've already talked a little bit about the mandate, but essentially what it's asking for in Senate Bill 195 is just to assess the impediments to transportation connectivity in a holistic fashion regarding not only automobile travel, but active transportation, multimodal infrastructure, and to provide better connectivity throughout the city that supports economic development and the quality of life and just getting to work and other opportunities. And so this is important, just so that, yeah, you support the lifeblood of the community through the transportation system. As mentioned, we've had some very engaging Steering Committee feedback, and our timeline is quite expedited. So in August 4th, we kicked this project off and had three Steering Committee meetings, October 8th, Planning Commission, which approved of this effort, and then today, the City Council. And so we're aiming for the November 1st reporting deadline, submit all to the WFRC. And so in the impediment analysis chapter, we look at six different sectors of the system, of transportation. So you have physical and natural constraints, infrastructure barriers, safety and performance, active transportation gaps, land use and ownership conflicts, and then finally equity and access barriers. So I'm just simplifying the presentable for presentation tonight. There's many more pages to this, but this is just kind of a highlight. So physical and natural constraints looks at things like waterway, flood zones, steep slopes. Yes, sir.
Vindalyn had assured me you were going to do a summary of each page. Is that not?
You like to read the whole thing. So this is, the waterways especially on this analysis slide were something that the state was quite interested in. And in this community, it represents some great opportunities, especially for access of transportation. It doesn't necessarily prevent many roads from bridging over, but with the Jordan Canal, there's also opportunities for making additional connections. So infrastructure barriers, we're looking at things like major roads, railroads, network, and traffic signals. So these, all these maps kind of are a layer cake, and then the composite map is just the full summary, kind of all the layers kind of added into one composite map. So you can see here with the blue dots, like connections where pedestrians can make between impediments such as major roads between neighborhoods. So you can see there's limited connectivity between some of your neighborhoods because of these railroads, interstates, and other highways. And then finally, the safety performance issues. This one's quite compelling, probably my go-to rationale for a lot of the decisions that were made later on. But this looks at things like crash density. This is overall look at crashes since 2020, AT crashes, which is active transportation, sorry, the jargon. Is anything this on two wheels or bipedal, humans walking or riding their bikes for the most part? And then the high-risk network, which was identified by the WFRC as a priority project based on these safety concerns. And so the composite map, you can see there's a lot of traffic violence happening in your community since 2020. So from this analysis, we were able to determine priority projects based on looking at impediments and and these projects were selected to reflect a combination of factors, including results from the impediment analysis, Steering Committee recommendations, findings from the previous lead city feasibility studies, available funding opportunities, which is a big deal, and then each project's potential to improve health, safety, and welfare of Midvale's residents. So listing from one to 10, we mainly have linear type improvements. There is one spot improvement, which is just like an intersection. But so, in no particular order, this is what kind of made onto the page. We have Tuscany View Road Extension, which is just right here next to City Hall. Bing Objection Park Bridge, it's the Jordan River Parkway, that's a bridge over the river. Union Park Trail Connection, which is just formalizing existing canal access to the Union Park where there's future capital permits to be completed. Fort Union Boulevard Parallel Bike Pathway, this one has a lot of impediments because there's just a lot going on. So because it has a lot of impediments, it may not be the first project to tackle from the list. And then there's Fort Union Boulevard Separated Bike Lane, which is just the eastern half, it's kind of split into two segments. Porter Rockwell Trail, which is along, parallel the tracks line, which is quite tight and a lot of right-of-way conflicts. Allen Street Connection, that's a slammed-up project. If you want an easy one to complete, it's just a little bit of right-of-way and a street extension. Fort Union and Romney Drive Crossing Improvement, this is a spot improvement that helps bifurcate the two halves of Fort Union and to allow safe active transportation connections between the two different designs that are proposed. Nine Hundred East Active Transportation Improvements, this one has a lot of funding already, and is waiting a couple of concepts that respond to either division that's been established or budget that we have. And then Maple Street Active Transportation Connective Connection to Tracks, that's just a connection from the neighborhood to the track station. And then finally, Salt Lake, Jordan Canal Trail, which I quite like because it's separated mixed-use path that goes north-south to various destinations throughout the community. So overall, this network is about 10 miles. That's been proposed through this priority project, so there's obviously a lot to accomplish over a limited funding for this opportunity. But, and this just kind of goes into some more of the sample slides that you might find in the document. This is kind of reviewing graphically the projects that were just mentioned, and so you can get a better understanding of them. And then finally, each project has a planning level cost estimate, which looks at just the higher level cost. There's some variability with these pricing because we have limited understanding of all the complexities in it. So there's kind of a note that this is within 50% or minus 200% of the actual cost. So there's some variability, but these planning level estimates are quite often used in the industry and are widely accepted for just general capital decisions that are made later. And then the last two chapters, which I didn't mention before, is just the funding sources will be identifying which opportunities align with the priority projects. And then finally, we have a references chapter for some of the resources that we use to complete this, so. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Tyler? Thank you. Appreciate it. Vindalyn, do you have anything additional?
Sure, just a quick comment. One of the motivations for us to try to accomplish this plan as quickly as possible is that the state law has a provision where the projects that are identified in this plan can receive a higher priority in the funding process. And so we hope that this may help us in some of our applications in the future.
Thank you, and we do appreciate the speed in which this was done, but also in a qualitative and quantitative measure, so we thank you as well, Tyler. This is scheduled for a public hearing tonight, so if council would like to open this to public comment?
Mayor, I move that we open public comment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of opening to public comments, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are open for public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on this plan, please step up to the mic. You'll be given three minutes. Looking to this side of the room where members of the public are sitting, don't see any. Okay, is there a motion to close public comment?
Mayor, I move that we close public comment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of closing public comments, say yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, public comment is closed, and there is a motion on the board for council to consider.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 2025-0-20, which adopts the Midvale City Transportation Connectivity Element of the General Plan with the finding in the staff report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Michelash?
Yes.
And Billings?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you for all your hard work on that. Look forward to some of those projects. Moving on to the consent agenda, wow, we have three items on the consent agenda. How'd that happen? First, consider minutes of October 7th, 2025. Also, consider ordinance 2025-018, amending several sections within Chapter 17-7-11 of the Midvale City Municipal Code, and consider Resolution Number 2025-R62, adopting the Midvale City Stormwater Master Plan. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I motion we approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the yeas and ayes?
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Michelash?
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
And Glover?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on, we have several action items. The first of which, council, you may have received an email earlier. I don't know if you've seen it yet, but we are asking to table Action Item A. Needs a little bit more work done on it, and we'll bring that back at our November 4th, no, November 18th council meeting. So someone would like to make a motion to table that?
To the next meeting, right?
Till November 18th meeting.
Mayor, I move that we table Action Item A, Resolution Number 2025-R-63, to the next meeting on November 18th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, does that require a roll call?
Let's do it.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Michelash?
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. We look forward to, and I know Sue Armitage certainly looks forward to the next council meeting where we will discuss Main Street ball belts. Moving on to the next action item, consider Resolution Number 2025-R64, authorizing the approval of a lease agreement with the Daughters of the Utah Pioneers for the placement of a historical marker located at 7650 South Lind Lane, Midvale, Utah. And here to discuss this is Katie. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This agreement is, as stated by the mayor, a lease agreement with the Daughters of Utah Pioneers and Midvale City. This agreement is pertaining to the fabrication, construction, and installation of a monument to hold a historical marker at the already existing cabin in Pioneer Park at 7650 South Lind Lane. That's backwards, Vindalyn. So sorry. If you guys look at the pictures that are up on the screen for you, the image on the left that has the red square is the proposed location for the monument. This proposed location obviously currently has the garbage can and the dog waste station. We have already previously met on site with the Daughters of the Utah Pioneers as well as Public Works. Public Works has stated that due to the monument being on the already existing concrete, they had no concerns with the monument being constructed here as it would not affect any landscaping or landscaping infrastructure. Sorry, guys, I'm really nervous, as you can probably tell. Also stated that they would be comfortable moving the existing garbage can and dog waste station to the right side of the sidewalk that you can see in the back there, so that would not be a concern for them either. And then the photo on the right was provided by the Daughters of Utah Pioneers as a reference photo of what they would like the proposed monument to look like. As stated previously, it's just a monument to hold the historical marker. The monument was previously at this location, I believe, but is no longer. The proposed dimensions for this monument would be three feet by three feet, standing about four and a half feet tall. The key terms for this agreement is that the Daughters of Utah Pioneers will retain sole ownership of the monument, and the Daughters of Utah Pioneers will be responsible for maintaining the monument in a good and safe condition, free from graffiti and damage. The city will maintain sole ownership of Pioneer Park, and this agreement will not create any Daughters of Utah Pioneers leasehold. This agreement shall be in effect for a period of 50 years. Both parties may mutually extend the term of this agreement by executing a written amendment. The Daughters of Utah Pioneers fabrication, construction, and installation of the monument must be completed in a safe, good, workmanlike manner and in compliance with all applicable laws. Additionally, the Daughters of Utah Pioneers will be solely responsible for all costs and expenses for the fabrication and installation of the monument. And then city staff obviously recommends approval of the lease agreement with the Daughters of Utah Pioneers for the construction and placement of a new monument to hold the historical marker for the cabin located at 7650 South Lind Lane. I am also requesting that the council suspends the rules for this agreement as the Daughters of Utah Pioneers would like to begin the construction of the proposed monument prior to winter weather conditions so that they can have a dedication ceremony for this monument in the spring of 2026.
Awesome. Thank you, Katie. Any questions for Katie? Good job, by the way. Is this your, is this your first time?
Yes.
Presenting the council? Okay, well, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Any questions for Katie?
I don't have a question. I just have a small comment. I think this park is such a good example of how things change so quickly, and we almost don't realize it. I remember when I was dating my wife like 17 years ago, we did this service project where we had to clean up the, this cabin area. And we had to walk through this field, we had to park on hold, we walked through this field, and we're like, this is the dumpyest place on the planet. There's nothing here. And we had to just like mow down like an acre's worth of grass. And, I mean, we have people from council that live in that area now, right? And even 15 years ago, when we did it, we're like, this is, you know, 16, 17 years ago, we were like, this is, this is a really weird spot for it. Now it's this beautiful thing, and so I really appreciate it, right? Just to see that, because I don't feel that old. Like, I don't feel like, you know, my dad says that. I'm like, sure, yeah, that, you know, cars weren't invented yet or something, you know. So it's just really great to see. I'm glad we're preserving it. My grandma was in the organization, you know, for a very long time, so she'd be very happy to, you know, to see, you know, sort of this preservation.
It is a really cool, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I want to say thank you to Katie and the team because the Daughters of the Pioneers came to us, what was it, like, two or three weeks ago? So this is, I was so excited to see it on the agenda. I love how, I mean, you jumped in and taken control and quickly So this is, I was so excited to see down the agenda. I love how, I mean, you jumped in and taken control and quickly made it happen, because I know they're excited to get it done. So just a big thank you to you and the Daughters of the Pioneers for making it happen, because I agree. Um, I visit that park often because it's in my area and I was always like. I wonder where the sign is. Hmm. So it'll be a nice addition and appreciate all your work on it.
Of course, thank you.
I just want to say it's a, you know, it's one of those things that I've always been amazed by, because, you know, I can see it from my um window. And al- also whenever people, when, you know, my mom comes to visit, anyone comes to visit, I show them this, because it I, it's just a really cool piece of history. In our backyard. Fun story about it. So this is called the Drown Cabin, D R O W N. And the family, so people kept saying to me, the drown family. And I'm like, oh, my God, that's so sad that this whole family drown. And of course, we'll do something with the cabin, but yes, that's their last name. That is not the fate they suffer. So really cool. I'm glad to get the marker there and hopefully uh Luke, who can walk to it every single day, um hopefully you nominate it for a Poki stop.
They they turned it down because the word drown was in it.
Maybe, okay. Okay, we'll pu- put you on that now that we hopefully have a monument there, but um is the, I think the motion is in the packet. Uh, we do need to suspend the rules if you want to approve that tonight.
Thank you.
I move that we suspend the rules and approve resolution number two zero two five dash R dash six four, authorizing the approval of a lease agreement. With the Daughters of Utah Pioneers for the placement of a historical marker located at seven six five oh South Linden Lane, Midvale, Utah. Eight four zero four seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the yeas and ayes?
Yes, Councilmember Mikulash.
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously and we look forward to the ribbon cutting. Um, moving on, we have one final action item tonight, and that is to consider resolution number twenty twenty-five R sixty-five. Amending the Harvest Days Festival Committee bylaws. And here to discuss that briefly is City Manager Matt Dolls.
Thank you. Um. When the Harvest Days Committee was originally approved, there were five, uh, did I write something wrong on there?
No, I'm just, I said that is quick. The motion's already up.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, uh, when the Harvest Days Committee was originally uh created, we have five members. Um, uh, of that committee, one chair for for the members. Um. The previous year, uh Mayor Stevenson had requested a change uh to the bylaws for Harvest States Committee that would make it so that there would be two alternates. Added to that. Part of that is to expand the number of people who could participate. Um, and um, and so you were good enough to make that change. After that request. Um, recently, uh, Mayor Gettle had requested that we make another change, which is. Um, that we would just make the seven members uh all full-time permanent voting members in every meeting. Uh, under the current scenario, the alternates would only be able to vote if there was a regular member who wasn't there. Um, and uh with the proposed change, uh, it would make it so that there would be seven full-time members. Um. That is it. That's in the packet. It's just changing that membership. If you have any questions about that, I would be happy to answer that, or I'm sure Mayor Gettle would as well. Um, do you have any questions?
I was just note, um, we found that the alternate participation was pretty low. Uh, because honestly, if they came here and weren't able to vote on anything. Um, so if if there were four people, for instance, who said, yeah, I'm going to be there, then the alternates might not show up. Because they're not necessarily needed. Plus, you know, I I've been on committees where, you know, you're the alternate. You got, you should, you don't feel like you're a fool. Member of the group. The only thing this does, it does change the the quorum number from three out of five to now four out of seven. But I think expanding the number, um, that shouldn't be a problem. And I think, again, it'll actually result in more participation from the committee members. Um, that said, real quick, uh, we we have, if this passes, so we'll, we will have seven um committee members, no matter what. Five and two alternates or seven full after tonight. So um Luke has agreed to join the Harvest Days Committee this year. Um, and we had Kawhi, our youth coordinator here in Midvale City. He has agreed to join the Harvest Days uh Committee as well. Uh, sorry, Matt, I forgot to inform you of that earlier today. Mike Williams had a friend who uh was also interested. So we have six people. Ready to go. That means if there's anyone out there, I have some ideas for a seventh, but I'm I'm also um open to any suggestions from the council. And we have one more to go. They are meeting this Thursday at five thirty P M. However, many um uh will depend on the the vote that happens next. But if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, but I just thought that was a better way to, you know, it's it's nicer to say, hey, I'm a committee member of Harvest Days. And not like I'm an alternate to the Harvest Days Committee.
I guess if we ran into a problem where we didn't have enough or something, we could. You know, change it back to what it was pretty easily, right? That would be the only thing that would stink is if we somehow.
And I think it has happened before and it's kind of like any other meeting. They can continue with informational items. Uh, they don't have to all go home immediately, but they just can't take any votes or or anything like that. But again, I think this will actually, we, I think we ran into that scenario. Last year. Um, I think this will actually help with that problem moving forward. There's a motion on the board for council to consider.
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash sixty-five, amending the Harvest Days Festival Committee bylaws.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, for the last time tonight, will you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Mikulash?
Yes.
And Billings?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Uh, we do not have a closed session and let's all pause for Paul to do his. Councilmember Glover, motion to adjourn, seconded by Councilmember Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.